Could you take your seats, please? We're going to get started. Thank you. Stephanie Pear. Good evening.
Hi. Can everyone hear? No. Can everyone hear? Hello? Can everyone hear? Oh, my God. Now? I don't want to touch it. Hi. My name is Stephanie and I'm from... My name is Stephanie and I'm from the Flatbush Tenant Coalition. I was born and raised in Brooklyn, never left. I am the daughter of immigrants. The first place they came to was Brooklyn. I'm a social worker, so I don't make a lot of money, but I help my community and I love it. The way the rents are going right now, I am very scared. I cannot afford any more rent increases. The way that Brooklyn has increased in people in the past five years is insane and the people that grew up in Brooklyn are paying for it and I don't think that's fair. My parents are no longer in Brooklyn, so if the rent increases, I have absolutely nowhere to go. I don't know what I would do if my rent goes any higher, which I'm already paying an absurd amount for the space and for my building that my landlord does not do anything. We have leaks in the apartment. We have holes in the floors. They told us they renovated, which is why they're increasing the rent, but we had bedbugs two years ago. The landlord did not do anything for almost four days. We had bedbugs. So, the rent increases, I, you know, please help the people and for the landlords that actually stayed or maybe they didn't because they don't want to put faces to the community, it's not fair. And we're people, we're not businesses. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean Fokes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jean Fokes and I'm a proud tenant leader for Flatbush Tenants Coalition. I have lived at 380 East 18th Street since 1977. This is my third landlord and, ha-ha-ha, his name is Ivan List. He doesn't have too many buildings, but he doesn't need anymore. I, um... When I first moved, came to America and when I first had an apartment and a lease, it looked like everything was good. The laws looked like they were on my side. Gradually Albany has changed the laws chip, chip, chip away preferential rents, IAA, MCI, and the AIA, AIA, individual apartment increase. There's no check to see how much the landlord really spent. He can just decide, this is what I spent, and so the rent goes up. And they'll stay on it forever and ever. We have to work so hard to prove ourselves. This Brooklyn housing court, there are 15 courtrooms, 14 for landlords and one for tenants. We have to work hard to keep records and to be able to defend ourself in court. The landlords, they don't have to do one bit of work. They throw a party at the plaza, fundraiser Albany says, here you are, babies. This is your recompense. This increase that, this rollback that we're asking for will not affect the landlords one bit. I am sure of that. It won't affect mine. His living, this standard of living has not changed one bit since he has been getting all these increases. I remember the days when there were 10% and 9% increases and the landlords didn't cry, they were happy. Now that we are asking for something to be done for us. The mayor says he's going to put up 200,000 affordable apartments. The 421A, we have a building at 626 Flatbush Avenue, which is supposed to have 30 affordable apartments. Even teachers can't fill in that up. The income is so high because the income is matched with the income from here is matched with the income in Westchester. So, they can't get it. We don't have... The tenants are upper wall. They are upper wall. And I have a lot of immigrants, Muslims and Napa's living in my building and they're scared of the landlord. So, they won't complain. They talk among themselves, but the landlord says, this is not the way I operate. And they think he's God. So, we are asking you, consider us. Consider the tenants in my building. And I'm sure there are a lot of them here in Brooklyn. Brooklyn is a melting pot. That cannot speak English, that don't know what is happening to them and they need your help. And we need a rollback. We need overcrowding is the order of the day in my building. I live in a one-bedroom. There are 11 people living on top of me to pay the rent. That ain't right!
Thank you. Devner Frederick.
Thank you.
Can y'all hear me? Can you hear me? Yeah? Hi, my name is Dr. Frederick DeBoer. I am a rent stabilized tenant in Lefferts Gardens in Brooklyn and I work for the Brooklyn College where I do data analysis. As a data analyst, I am kind of amazed we even have to have this conversation because you have a lot of high-quality data and the findings are absolutely overwhelming that landlords are making money hand over fist and tenants are suffering. That's a fact. The numbers are all in front of you and they only tell one story and that story is of landlords who are raking in money while tenants suffer. This is not subject to reasonable disagreement. Right? That is the objective truth. Look at the data that you've gathered. There is, we've had 11 straight years of profit increases for the landlords. Foreclosures are very low. Resale values are very high. There is billions of dollars from foreign entities pouring into the city right now purchasing up real estate in New York that no one intends to live in. Why are they doing that? Because New York real estate is one of the safest investments in the world. Literally. It's like buying T-bills. You have people from Saudi Arabia and China buying up properties that lay vacant for the entirety of the lifespan of those apartments precisely because it is such a safe investment. So, my question to you is, what are you protecting the landlords from? We know that their investment is highly profitable. Your numbers tell you so. We know that it's a very safe investment because the market is telling us that. So, who and what are you protecting? By the way, when we talk about landlords nowadays, we're not often talking about people because a majority of the housing stock in New York City is owned by hedge funds and other financial entities. You're not putting anybody out on the street. We're talking about giant corporations whose value is distributed in stock. I know that this is a highly emotional issue. I know that it's a highly political issue, but you don't have an emotional or a political decision ahead of you. All you need to do is be rational people who know how numbers work and roll back the rent. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speakers are Darren Whitman, Marina Matalos, and Lincoln Eckles. Darren Whitman, Marina Matalos, and Lincoln Eckles. Good evening.
I want to start off with, I'm a landlord, so save your boos to the end. Okay? Just give me, just give me a chance, okay? Just let me read it and then, and then you can boo me. Because I'm sure you're going to, okay? So, for the last three years, wages are up. The economy is improving. Owners... Guys, want to... How are we going to do this?
Okay, let's let him speak, please. Please, let's let him speak.
Okay. For the last three years, wages are up. The economy is improving. Owners' costs are up. And the last three years, this board has not authorized a single inflation-based increase. What is the reason? Perhaps you're not taking consideration us small owners who don't have much wiggle room to make up costs. Perhaps this board just hates landlords. Some of us owners are well-liked by our tenants. Do our best to take care of our buildings. I feel sorry for the victims of harassment, but that has nothing to do with me and likely most other landlords. I'll redact that. It sounds like a lot of you are being harassed and I really, I really feel bad for that, okay? I really, it's pathetic. No, you shouldn't have to deal with that. Let me remind you, uh, let's see what I got to... Yeah, yeah. Okay. Anyway, are you just placating to hypocritical mayor or, by the way, again, raised his own rents this year by 3%? Let me remind you that this is an independent board. You need to ignore what the mayor suggests. Please work within the framework of this law. Cronyism is not part of that framework. Building owners at some point need to pass along costs or they will eventually go bankrupt. This is the nature of inflation. Your actions are, hey, your actions are leaving owners with two options. Cut costs or pass on where they can, which happens to be free-market tenants, as in the case of mixed stabilized free-market buildings. Let's not advocate the raised free-market tenants rents. They already disproportionately shoulder the extreme cost of New York City housing. RGB policies are scaring off developers from increasing affordability housing stock and thus fixing the affordability problem. Look around. Every building you see being built is a luxury rental condo. What else? Tax revenues are down. Taxes are based on net revenues. Not good, especially when you have a spend-thrift mayor. New York City has a 100-plus-year-old end-of-life housing stock. By not giving inflation-adjusted increases, you're forcing owners to sell, who in turn sell to developers, who in turn tear down stabilized units and put up luxury free-market housing, again decreasing the affordability stock. One last point on the subject. The pendulum swings two ways. If you keep up with your below-inflation policy, you're giving more firepower to elite landlords that want to convince Albany that stabilization is a failure and to repeal it. Or empowering the next conservative mayor to appoint a cronyistic RGB board to max out rents. In these times of extremist politics, it's time we wave an olive branch. This law is meant to prevent speculative increases and what is centrist and fair is an inflation-based increase. If you do not do it for the broader market, can you do it for us small landlords? It's within your right. You're choking us small guys out of the market.
Thank you. Excuse me. Marina Matalos.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi there. Hi, everyone. My name is Marina Matalos. I am a rent stabilized tenant. I live in Stuyvesant Town where for 27 years I've lived in apartment 9A in my building on East 14th Street. I am grateful, I am lucky. And I know that I am in Stuyvesant Town for nothing that had to do with my efforts, this luck. I am also grateful because I am not my neighbors in apartment 9C. My neighbors, Clara and Miguel, have lived on my floor for three years. Clara has described to me how stressful it was to find an affordable house, apartment in New York City when she was offered a job in New York several years ago. It was so stressful that they almost didn't accept the work. Now, let's linger on this point because here are people given a job opportunity in New York City who can't take it because of the housing market. We've been neighbors for three years during which time they welcomed daughter number one and daughter number two and the four lovely family members live in a one-bedroom. Now, I have been a rent stabilized tenant long enough to be a heritage tenant, so my rent was never illegally deregulated, pumped through the meat grinder to the market rate set and then re-regulated. I know that I pay under $2,700, but my neighbors Clara and Miguel pay, I don't know what, 45? 47? It's weird we're all stabilized. Because Clara and Miguel have secondary degrees, what's affordable for them has a little bit of room. But I did read recently the National Low Income Housing Coalition study that cited the minimum wage earners' opportunity to rent in the United States. There are 12 counties in which a minimum wage worker can rent a one-bedroom. 12 counties in the whole of the United States, C to C. Even here in New York City with our fight for 15, there are no ones or twos that are within reach for minimum wage. What you do matters to me. It matters to my neighbors Clara and Miguel. It matters to everyone here and that's why we need a rollback. Thank you.
Thank you. Lincoln Eckles.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me? How's that? Okay. I'm a small landlord and someone mentioned something about a leak just today. I'm coming here. Hello? Can you hear me now? Okay, I'm a small landlord. Just now, I had to deal with a leak. I, I go through all the little trials and tribulations that the tenants go through because I live in the property myself. What I want to say is that my family's had this property since the 50s and I'm basically a link in the chain. We're in Crown Heights and we're trying to hold on to our property. But the problem is the city is raising our taxes to astronomical amount. I just did the numbers and since 2015, my taxes have gone up 135%. I have the numbers here. Someone mentioned something about gentrification and moving tenants out, something like that. That's not how my family operates. That's not how I operate. A quick rundown of our recent move-outs. I had a family move-out. They had to go back to Korea. They had a family emergency. I had a grandmother move in the 70s. She died. She was paying less than $400 a month. I had another grandmother move in in the 50s. She died. She was paying less than $300. I have four of the move-outs. Actually, no, three of the move-outs I have listed here. They all bought homes. One tenant's bought a home. He's still in the property. Right now, I'm breaking even. I don't know about 2018. I'm assuming I'm going into debt. The proposed increases for a landlord like me, it's not going to cut it, especially if I get another double-digit tax increase. The current, this July, the tax increase basically wipes out one apartment, the revenue from one apartment. So, they, if it's done again, I'm screwed. I'm out. And all of you people that are complaining about rent increases, this, that, and the other, it's these huge landlords, these corporations, they're going to end up with a property. And you don't see them here. They're not coming to talk because they don't need to. They can bully the mayor, bully the governor. Understand? They could bully all the politicians and they'll do it quietly. That's it.
Thank you. Excuse me, excuse me.
Excuse me, can we ask you a couple of questions?
Mr. Eckles, could you answer a question, please?
Thank you so much for, thank you. Thank you so much for sharing your testimony with us. Do you think that small property owners like yourself should be treated differently than these multinational corporations that tenants are talking about and that we know own most of the rent stabilized block in New York City?
At this stage, yes. There's no, all the way around it because the market is too big and there are people that are able to squeeze profit out of this situation. Scale is everything. So, somebody like me, I only have so much wiggle room. So, what you do greatly affects me. For people that have 1,000-plus units, not so much. They have the wiggle room. They have the resources so that they're not addressing this board. They're addressing politicians directly. Their deals are being made in private so that they get their profitability. The, either it's tax concessions or some other something. But we're not privy to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Alyssa Kyle, Jason Tabor, and Natividad Perez. Alyssa Kyle.
Good evening.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Alyssa Kyle and I have been a financial coach in New York City for the past two and a half years and have worked with some of the most vulnerable residents of this city, a large portion of which live in rent stabilized buildings and will be greatly affected by the decision you all make next week. During my time as a coach, I have gained a unique understanding of the financial realities of New Yorkers and it is through this understanding that I have come to realize that while rent is certainly the largest monthly expense in most households, it does not exist in a vacuum and it would be unethical to make decisions about rent policies, as if it does. While I could speak for hours about the countless factors that should be considered, I would like to take this opportunity to discuss two main things that if thoroughly considered should lead you all to vote against these increases. These factors are, one, expected increases in wages and two, how an increase in wages affects other income and expenses in a household. And someone mentioned earlier the affordable housing lottery buildings, 80/20 buildings, and how those aren't necessarily affordable. For the purposes of this, I did use three different lottery buildings in Brooklyn that are currently up on NYC Housing Connect, the family size and incomes. And I would like to point out that they're not affordable to a lot of New York, even if they are considered affordable housing. And so, keep in mind that while my statistics that you all have in front of you do say one thing, it's a lot worse for the majority of people who might not qualify for those affordable housings, housing projects. So, of course, it is obvious that what would happen to a household's budget if they do not receive any wage increase year over year. Their after-rent disposable income would decrease by the exact percentage that their rent increases. However, let's assume a better-case scenario, one where income does rise. According to the last report released by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the average Kings County workers on increase year over year from last year of 1.6% of wages, much less than the 4% increase in rent that you all may allow them to be subjected to. However, their after-rent disposable income will be even further decreased when calculating how things such as public assistance and student loan payments are impacted by an increase in wages. To demonstrate this, I prepared three scenarios based on three different affordable housing lottery or 80/20 developments in Brooklyn. In the first example, which you all have in front of you, you can see that if a family of four currently making just under $30,000 per year, what might be deemed low-income in New York City, receives the average wage increase of 1.6%, but their rent also increases by 4%, their increased wages are completely negated due to the increase in rent and decrease in SNAP benefits. In fact, their after-rent disposable income would actually decrease by 1%. If the same two adjustments were to happen to a family of four currently bringing in just under $59,000 per year, deeming them middle-income and ineligible for public assistance, their after-rent disposable income would decrease by almost 1%, exactly 0.7%. This can be seen in Exhibit 2.
Excuse me, your time is up.
Okay.
Can you wind up your presentation?
Yes, yes, yes.
We do have your testimony here.
Perfect. As evidenced by these three examples, it is clear that regardless of current socioeconomic class or household size and even assuming a best-case scenario where income does increase year over year, the proposed increases in rent will make any sort of upward mobility nearly impossible for tenants of stabilized buildings. So, next week, I hope you will vote against these rent increases and instead vote for financial security, increased opportunity, and upward mobility for New Yorkers. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Tabor.
Excuse me. Just let me make one announcement before you begin your presentation. It's 10 minutes to 8:00. If you want to speak, you need to register before 8:00. Okay? So, if there's anyone who wants to speak, be sure to register at the desk outside the auditorium before 8:00. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good evening. My name is Jason Tabor. I'm pastor of St. John the Evangelist Lutheran Church in East Williamsburg, Brooklyn. And so, on behalf of our small congregation, I want to tell you this evening and give voice to the devastation that's been caused by rising rents. Over the past two decades, my small congregation, along with many others and other community organizations in our neighborhood, has been decimated as members have been forced to move out of the neighborhood they grew up in because they could no longer afford to live there. We have members living in homeless shelters in the Bronx. We have members in Far Rockaway, in New Jersey, even as far away as Buffalo. If New Yorkers, New York City residents have to go to Buffalo to find affordable housing, something is wrong. Nobody, okay, there we are. This is destructive to long-held relationships within the community. It's destructive to the institutional knowledge necessary to maintain our community organization and it's destructive to the fabric of our neighborhood. If you vote for a rent increase, be very clear, you will be contributing to the destruction of neighborhoods like ours all across the city. We want our neighborhoods back. Please don't vote for a rent increase. We want our neighborhoods back, but more than that, our faith tells us that all people are created equal and are created equally valuable. What that means is that the ability to live in a comfortable, affordable neighborhood, in a neighborhood of their own choosing, to be able to raise their children and grow old in that neighborhood is not a right only for the rich but for middle and low-income people as well. You face a pretty clear choice in my mind. You can put money back in the pocket of a few or you can stand with the overwhelming majority of New Yorkers who need your help. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Natividad Perez.
I think we need the interpreter, please. Buenas tardes, miembros de la junta de administración de rentas. Mi nombre es Natividad Pérez y vivo en Brooklyn, en el apartamento 1L. Estoy aquí para testificar sobre los problemas que vivo en mi apartamento. Yo, Natividad, estoy en contra de los abusos y amenazas de los dueños de casa y en contra de los inquilinos. Yo vivo 30 años en este edificio y el dueño me subió la renta exageradamente. De $800 me subió a $1,250 y nunca me arregló el apartamento. Ahora comenzó a arreglarme la cocina porque yo llamé al 311. Tiene un mes y todavía no termina. Basta de abusos y ojalá que nuestra voz sea escuchada. Les pido a los miembros de esta junta que se toquen el corazón, que vean las necesidades de los inquilinos y que no aumenten la renta. Los dueños no nos dan los servicios, nos amenazan que nos van a votar de nuestros hogares. No es justo que ellos reciban un aumento. Gracias y que Dios los bendiga a todos.
Thank you.
Good evening to the board. My name is Natividad Perez. I live in apartment 1L in Brooklyn and I'm here to testify about the problems that I have in my apartment. I have, I have suffered abuses from, abuses and threats from my landlord and they've also done... and threats from my landlord. And they've also done this to other tenants where I live. I've lived there for 30 years and the owner increased the rent dramatically from 800 to 1,250. And he never made any of the repairs in the apartment. And now, he just started repairing the kitchen because I called 311 and it took him a month. And it's been a month and they still haven't finished with the repairs. And it's enough with all these abuses. And I hope that our voices are really being heard. I ask the members of the board to really reach within your heart, to see the needs of the tenants, and to not increase the rent. The owners, they don't provide us with good services. They threaten us that they're going to kick us out of our homes and it's not fair that they receive this increase. Thank you very much and may God bless you.
Thank you. All right, the next three speakers are Raquel Soto, Luz Rosero, and Brittany Taylor. Raquel Soto.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Raquel Soto. Vivo en el 77 de Varret, en Williamsburg. Mi comunidad está creciendo demasiado. Los apartamentos están aumentando. El dueño está arreglando los apartamentos. Mi renta actual es de 600 y me mandó una renta que yo tengo que pagar de $2,500 porque aumentó la renta y me arregló los apartamentos. Este, yo estoy en corte gracias a la agencia de San Nicolás que me ayudó con un service para yo poder defenderme en la renta y no pagar esa renta que me está diciendo. Tenemos ahora mismo 177 violaciones en el building y no podemos pagar esa cantidad de renta. Tengo 30 años viviendo ahí.
My name is Raquel Soto and I live on 77 Varret Street in Williamsburg. And the rent is increasing in our neighborhood and our landlord isn't making any repairs. My rent was just increased from $600 to $200, $500 because apparently they've made repairs. We live from check to check.
Sí.
We live from check to check and we don't get raises. And I hope that you hear us out in not increasing the rent. Our landlord has about 170 violations and I've been living there.
Sí.
And I've been living in this building for 30 years.
¿Quiere decir algo más?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Luz Rosero.
Okay, está bien. Buenas tardes, miembros de la junta de administración de renta. Mi nombre es Luz Rosero. Soy la presidenta del comité uno de organización de vecinos unidos. Nosotros somos del norte de Brooklyn y nuestra organización lucha en contra de desplazamiento de la familia de recursos económicos limitados y moderados. Estoy aquí para testificar a nombre de nuestro miembro y nuestro miembro están siendo desplazado de sus hogares. Los dueños lo están hostigando y negándoles servicios básicos. No creemos que a esta fecha los dueños merezcan un aumento de renta. Es más, que solo inquilinos lo que sufren cada día un aumento de renta. Lo pone más cerca de ser desplazado porque nuestra familia tiene que elegir cada mes renta, comprar comida, medicina, o pagar la renta. Se paga renta, se come, o se paga renta. Entonces le pedimos a los miembros de esta junta que se toquen el corazón, que vean las necesidades de los inquilinos, y que no nos aumenten la renta. Porque la verdad nosotros ya estamos invadidos de mucha injusticia. Y queremos que ustedes nos apoyen a esta base que nosotros estamos luchando. La renta sube y suben y el pueblo sufre y sufre. Esa es mi delegación. Gracias.
Let's hear the interpretation, please.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Luz Rosero. I'm the president of our committee in Uno, the Organization for Vecinos Unidos, United Neighbors. We're from the northern part of Brooklyn and our organization is fighting against displacement of families of low and moderate incomes. I am here today to testify in behalf of our members. Our members are being displaced from their homes. Owners are harassing them and not giving them basic services. We don't believe that the owners deserve an increase. Actually, the tenants who are suffering every day, and that would be increased if there's a rent increase. It puts the tenants in a very difficult situation where they might become displaced because our families have to every day or every month decide how much food they're going to buy, what medicine they're going to buy, or if they're going to pay the rent. We ask the members of the board to reach within your hearts and to see the needs of the tenants and to not increase the rent. We always have to figure out whether we're going to eat or if we're going to pay the rent. And we've been suffering these injustices and we hope that you really support us because the rent continues to go up. Thank you.
Thank you. Brittany Taylor.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Brittany Taylor. I live in Williamsburg.
Can you speak up and right into the mic, please?
Hi, my name is Brittany Taylor. I live in Williamsburg. My management company is also A&amp;M Associates. The CEO has a $20 million condo in Miami Beach. There's a class action lawsuit against him where he only pays the supers $3.45 an hour. I did not see anyone from the management company in my building until this fall. I've lived there for six years. There's been leaks and mold. My health has suffered. When, the only reason they made repairs was because we organized and filed a lawsuit against them. The construction that they've done has been dangerous and dirty and incomplete. I've had to take off many, many days off of work and so I have lost wages. There have been rat bones in the ceilings. There are rats in the pipes. They use toxic chemicals to fix the leaks and I can't stay in the apartment more than 10 minutes because my eyes start burning. They have harassed the tenants both sexually and racially. Many of the tenants do not speak English in my building and they threaten them with their immigration status. They're cruel. They're greedy. The taxes on that building are about $15,000 for a 35-unit building because they have a tax abatement for a renovation that they never made. And there's, you know, patterns of behavior where they look at tenants as a portfolio and not as people.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Ruth Hippelite, Andrew Foltz-Morrison, and Marilyn Daniels.
Hello. Good evening, panel.
Good evening.
I'd like to talk about an issue that's been brought to you guys already before during the night, but landlords are doing fine. And I'll tell you why. Two words, preferential rent. Landlords have created a Wall Street earnings with preferential rent. I consider myself a victim of preferential rent. Although it is a legal practice, it is very deceptive. It is a way that landlords have used to creatively raise the rent and price tenants out of the apartments. Once a tenant leaves, legally, they have a right to jump the rent by 11% to 25%. It's a runaway train that benefits the landlords only. I'm asking the rent board to consider not putting in a raise. The landlords do not need any more money. Folks in my building have suffered a lot because of preferential rent. Soon as they get their next lease, the rent is up by $400 to $600. They've been priced out and they have to leave. Supply and demand should not surpass the human need of a place to live. We are not cars. This is not a factory. This is not corporate. I remember when folks didn't even want these units and wouldn't even walk in these neighborhoods. We stayed here. We endured. We endured the violence. We endured the drugs. We endured the crime and we stayed here. And now they want us out, as if we were never here. It's hurtful and it's painful. I am asking you not to give the increase to these landlords. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Andrew Foltz-Morrison and I live in a rent-stabilized apartment on Myrtle Avenue in Bed-Stuy and I'm also a member of the Metropolitan Council on Housing. Not long after I moved into my apartment, I was fortunate enough to obtain my apartment's rent history. From that, I was shocked to learn that my apartment's rent has increased by nearly $1,000 in four years due to vacancy bonus and individual apartment improvements. So I commend the rent guidelines board for the past two years of rent freezes, but I can't help but feel that my apartment, like so many others, was left out of this. Other new tenants aren't as lucky as me and might not even have a paper trail for how much their apartment has increased in cost because registering the rent in your apartment has now become optional. I mention this because, as so many others have said before me, it's the backdrop against which the official rent increases by the board are taking place. The board's own report shows that real rents in rent-stabilized apartments have outpaced official increases by over 40% over the past 25 years. And according to data from the census, rents have increased more than twice as fast as the median wage for New York. Who in this room that's not an owner can expect to be making double what they make now in the next 25 years?
No.
Not me. That's what you need to keep up if these trends continue for the next 25 years as they've done. Rent stabilized means a long-term home. I urge you to consider the long-term impact of what might seem like a modest one-year increase as it gets compounded with IAIs, MCIs, and other increases. And so I urge you to break with this tradition of unsustainable, unaffordable rents and roll back the rent. What do we want?
Rent.
When do we want it?
Now.
Marilyn Daniels, please.
Thank you for listening.
Yep, thank you.
And I hope you'll hear our words and do what's best for an affordable New York City. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Marilyn Daniels, but I'm really here to speak to the board regarding the landlords. I'm not a landlord, I'm a tenant. But the misnomer here is that a lot of these high-risers that have been built are condos and they're not. They're actually rentals and rent-stabilized rentals. So they're all getting rebates, tax rebates, and other tax credits for building these buildings even though the rents are high, sky-high. As far as the landlord saying how they're suffering, they're not suffering. What they want to do is they benefited off of working people, us hard-working people that are focused on getting a salary to pay our rent and pay our bills and take care of our children and so forth. And now, since the economy has boosted in this particular area around the city, all over New York, they want to throw away the people that they used and benefited from getting these rent tax credits and so on and so forth that they were required to have a certain amount of rent. So they were benefiting from Jump Street. So now they want to kick these people out and use this, they need money because they want to renovate their apartments to make them desirable to higher-income tenants. That is what that is about. So they're not suffering. They just don't want to deal with the people that they were dealing with before, that they were benefiting from before. They're burning people out of their houses. They're using harassment tactics, as everyone has said. A lot of people don't know their legal rights. I work in the legal field, so I deal with judges, lawyers, and so on and so forth. I've seen the dirt that's been done. I help people. People come up to me all the time and I tell them what they need to do to keep records and keep track of things to protect their rights. The last thing I want to say is that you're human beings, but this board does not reflect the people in this audience. So you may not understand the culture that we have. You may think that, oh, you had the opportunity to do X, Y, and Z, being here before this economic boost, but that's not the case. Just as the young lady said before when she came up, she said that we've been working hard. People are focused on paying their bills. They're not focused on going to the senator and so on and so forth. And that's what you all need to do. You need to phone 311 for your complaints and get together and go to your congressman and your senators. Because just coming here, this is one thing that you need to do to show that you have a voice. But showing you have a voice is on paper petitioning your congresspeople. That's the only way that we're going to get anything done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next three speakers are Fabiola Coranza, Leonida Acuñero, and Noba Maldonado.
Good evening. I don't know if they can hear me.
Good evening to everyone here tonight. I am grateful for the opportunity to voice my objection to the considered rent hike. As a longtime resident of Sunset Park, a community which I happen to grow in and love, I witness day-to-day the needs of many families that are under attack by a landlord who for self-interest and his attempt to cash in on gentrification, has continually denied his tenants' basic services in order to discourage their tenancy. In these rent-controlled apartments that we call our home, we have suffered under the neglect to the extent where he has endangered our lives due to a negligent gas leak that was building-wide, which he managed to restore once again illegally and was caught by DOB doing so. He continues to negate the proper channels in order to obtain the permits necessary to do a lot of the work that's going on in these buildings, none of which benefit us. We're being exposed to all kinds of dust matters. We have a huge electrical problem going on in our building, not to mention a seriously faulty boiler. And the lack of cleaning and maintenance of rubbish because he refuses to give us a super continues to exasperate the vermin and roaches throughout the building, throughout all the tenants. Not to mention the exposure to mold created by the negligence of plumbing work. You know, we as the tenants, the head of households, and the members of the community have proactively sought the relief of neighbors helping neighbors. And only then were we able to see some relief. And only then were we able to see some relief, which we were able to unite together to pressure AEP, HPD, DOB, and now DHCR to hold this man accountable. And the fight is not over yet, as he has managed to even ignore the city's and the state's orders to pay civil penalties. So, in regards to any consideration for any sort of rent increase, I am requesting that a no vote be upheld, as all the time spent on these efforts has become a second job to many of us, who only desire was to live in a peaceful environment that we call home, and to move forward with our families, and not continue to undergo the stifling effects of a landlord who is greedy. And if that weren't enough, this man is also running to be city council in Sunset Park, the very community where he owns property. Could you imagine the abuse of power that would take place at this point, which is very evident in the way that he runs his properties?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, your time is up. Could you wind up your presentation, please?
Sure. For the sake of advancing himself politically as well as financially. Please, you need to roll back the rent, and this man should be thoroughly investigated.
Thank you. Leonida Acevedo. She needs a Spanish interpreter, please.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es la señora Leonida Acevedo. Yo estoy aquí con Catholic-
Excuse me, we have an official interpreter. I'm sorry? Okay.
Mi nombre es la señora Leonida Acevedo. Yo estoy aquí con Catholic Immigration Services. Vivo en el 325 de Nikelbock Avenue, y tengo 14 años viviendo allí. Yo soy madre soltera y estoy deshabilitada. Mis hijos y yo necesitamos una reducción de renta porque no me alcanza el dinero que me entra. Tengo dos hijos y pago más de 60% de renta, y yo recibo solo... Lo que recibo se va en renta, luz, gas, comida, y ropa. Quisiera poder sacar, quisiera poder sacar a mis hijos a pasear, y no puedo. Tengo que, tengo que sentarme a comer lo que ellos desean, pero no puedo. Esa es mi realidad. Tengo que pensar primero en la renta para no quedar fuera de mi casa, ya que el dinero no me alcanza. El dinero, el dueño, no se merece otro incremento de la renta, porque no hace las reparaciones necesarias. Y en el invierno me la paso llamando al 311, porque nunca me quiere dar calefacción. Solo así, llamando al 311, él hace caso, y mi abogado lo llama a él. Gracias a que mi casero nunca quiere darme calefacción. A eso ha provocado que mi salud y la salud de mis hijos vayan deteriorando. El motivo más importante por el cual le pido que no aumenten la renta es porque me pongo de una forma, me ponen en una posición en que tengo que pensar entre darle de comer a mis hijos o pagar la renta. Pónganse en mis zapatos y piensen qué lindo sería poder sacar a mis hijos, aunque sea una sola vez, a comer afuera, o poder darle de comer a mis hijos, o sacarlo a jugar. Muchas gracias. Buenas noches.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leonida Acevedo, and I'm here with Catholic Immigration Services. I live at 325 Nikelbock Avenue, and I've been there for 14 years. I'm a single mother, and I'm disabled. My children, I need a rent reduction because the salary that we get is not enough. I have two children, and I have to pay 50% of what I get just in rent. That's without taking into account electricity, gas, food, clothes, and other expenses. I would like to take my kids out to just walk around, sit down, eat outside, just like they want to, but that's not my reality. I have to think first about paying rent, otherwise I'm going to be without a roof, because money is not enough. The owner doesn't deserve another increase because he doesn't make the necessary repairs. During the winter, I'm always calling 311 because he never wants to give me enough heat. Or if I contact my attorney, then he'll attend. Because the landlord hasn't been able to give me heat, my children's health and my own health has been deteriorated. The most important reason why I ask you not to increase the rent is because you put me in a position in which I have to decide between giving food to my children or pay the rent. Please put yourself in my shoes, and think about how good, how wonderful it will be to bring my kids out, have something to eat, for just one day, just like any other kid. Please make a just decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nelva Maldonado.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Nelva Maldonado, y yo estoy aquí con Catholic Immigration Services. Vivo en Bushwick, y tengo 15 años viviendo allí. Soy madre soltera y deshabilitada. El área de Bushwick ha cambiado tanto porque las rentas han subido exageradamente, hasta llegar al punto que los pobres ya no pueden tener un apartamento. Yo estoy aquí para pedirles que se acuerden de las personas mayores que dejaron sus energías y sus fuerzas en sus trabajos, y deshabilitadas por problemas de salud que viven un cheque al mes del Social Security, y ese cheque no alcanza para pagar ni la tercera parte de la renta. Y por esa razón, nos vemos obligados a compartir nuestros apartamentos con personas desconocidas, perdiendo la privacidad y la comodidad. De ustedes depende que aumente el número de familias viviendo en la calle. De ustedes depende que los dueños de casa paren con los abusos, porque ellos son puntuales en cobrar la renta, pero no para darle mantenimiento a los apartamentos. Porque ellos quieren que uno se vaya, para rentarle a otra persona más caro. Por favor, paren esto. No le regalen a los caseros un aumento. Gracias.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nelva Maldonado, and I'm here with Catholic Immigration Services. I live in Bushwick, and I've been there for 15 years. I'm a single mother, and I'm disabled. The Bushwick area has changed a lot because of the high rents, how much they have increased. So much that poor people or low-income people cannot afford an apartment anymore. I'm here to request for you to remember the elderly, those who left their energies, the strength in their jobs, and now they're disabled because of health issues. Now they live with just one check from Social Security. This check doesn't even cover a third of the rent. For this reason, now we're obligated to share our apartments with unknown people, people we don't know, losing our privacy and the commodity of your own apartment. It is in your hands not to increase the families that go to live in the streets. It is in your hands for the landlords to stop abusing, because they're on point when it's time to charge the rent, but when it's time to make the repairs, they don't want to make them. They just want you to leave so they can rent the apartment more expensive to someone else. Please stop this, and don't give another increase to the landlords. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is Stephanie Espinal here? Stephanie Espinal?
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Stephanie Espinal, y estoy aquí en representación de la comunidad de Bushwick. Soy una organizadora de inquilinos. A lo largo de este trabajo en el área de Bushwick, duele ver cómo los inquilinos lamentando el caso tienen que evitar pagar por su comida para pagar por la renta. Duele ver cómo los caseros abusan de ellos cuando necesitan reparaciones, y ellos no prestan atención.
I'm gonna do it like this this time. Hi, my name is Stephanie Espinal. I'm a tenant organizer with Catholic Immigration Services, and I'm here representing the Bushwick community. It is really hard to see how tenants are suffering because they have to decide between paying rent or having food on their table. It is hard to see the abuse that landlords give to these tenants because when it's time to make the repairs, they just don't do them.
Cualquier mínima reparación es un cargo extra para nuestros inquilinos. Y pensar en que nuestros inquilinos tienen que pagar por algo que necesitan como derecho, porque ya están pagando renta. Un aumento extra es algo más que aniquilarlos.
Any little repair that the tenants has to make, landlord wants to charge for it. And this is a right that they already have, because they already paying rent, so they shouldn't have to pay for this. So, anything else is just an abuse.
Muchos de nuestros inquilinos solamente reciben un pequeño cheque de Social Security. En algunos casos, esto no les da, y tienen que estar pidiéndole dinero a los hijos para poder completar la renta. ¿Creen ustedes que si estando ustedes en esta situación harían lo mismo? ¿Tendrían que recurrir a pedirle a sus hijos?
A lot of our tenants only live with one check from Social Security. And so, most of the times, they have to ask their children or family members for help to pay for their rent. If you were in that situation, if you only got one paycheck, would you do the same? Would you go and ask your children, your family members, for help to pay your rent?
Muchos de los caseros no piensan, ni se ponen en los zapatos de los padres que tienen que decidir entre darle de comer a sus hijos o pagar la renta. Ellos reciben quizás seis rentas en un mes. Sabemos que tienen que pagar taxes, pero y estos padres tienen derecho, tienen la culpa de esto. No es una razón por la que usted tenga un edificio de seis apartamentos y dejar de trabajar. Se supone que tenemos igual derecho para todos.
These landlords don't put themselves in these tenants' shoes. They don't think that these parents have to choose to put food on the table for their children or pay rent. They don't think about that. And yes, they have to pay taxes in their building, but they're also receiving rent from things different apartments. So, they don't put themselves in their shoes.
Y la clásica: no dar calefacción en el invierno. Es algo que va deteriorando los huesos. Y si pensamos por qué las personas ahora andan cojas, tienen problemas, esa es una de las razones. Tenemos un casero el cual prefiere pagar una multa a la ciudad y no darle calefacción a una señora de 70 años. ¿Creen ustedes que eso es justo?
And a classic one, not giving heat during the winter, this is very hard for elderly people. If you haven't thought of it, it deterior, it makes, it gives you trouble in your bones. Like, it hurts. If you ask yourself why you see people walking with a cane, not being able to move easily, it's because of this. And we have a landlord that prefers to pay, fine, thank you, to the city over giving heat to a 70-year-old tenant.
Por último, quisiera decirles, hoy somos nosotros, pero mañana quizá algunos de ustedes estará en este lugar y van a desear que por lo menos alguien los escuche y le diga, "Podemos hacer algo para cambiar la diferencia." Ustedes pueden hacer la diferencia por los inquilinos. Ustedes pueden darnos esa reducción de renta y no regalar simple y llanamente a los caseros por el simple hecho de que ellos necesitan pagar más taxes. Ellos pueden trabajar, nosotros ya lo hacemos, y dejamos la, dejamos la piel trabajando para que ellos estén tranquilos en la casa solamente cobrando una renta.
And lastly, today is us here, but tomorrow it may be you. And you may have a place to come and say something about it, or you may not. But it is in your hands to make a difference, and not to give landlords another increase, or another way to make more money, because just like us, if they need money, they could also work. We leave our skin in our work, in everything that we do. So, don't give another increase to them. Say something else at the end.
Me gustaría que visitaran o conocieran lo que es uno de estos apartamentos, falta de reparaciones, sin uno de los, falta de reparaciones, que lo visitaran por un día y vieran la situación real en la que viven estas personas, porque quizá ustedes no lo han visitado.
It will be great if you're able to come out to one of these places, one of the tenants' apartments, and you can see the reality that they live in, that they don't have repairs and the conditions that they live in, because maybe you don't know, and this is a good way for you to learn. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Ana Hernandez, Magna Lopez, and Marcela Metainis.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Ana Hernandez. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Ana Hernandez. Estoy con vecinos ayudando vecinos. En el año 2013, trate de aprender mis derechos como inquilina, ya que tenía muchos problemas con los dueños del edificio, William Yang and his hija Jane Yang. El apartamento se encontraba en pésimas condiciones, y cada vez que ellos los llamaba para decirle algo dañado, ellos no hacían absolutamente nada. Solo cobraban la renta y se iban. Debido a eso, comencé a reportarlo a la ciudad, por escrito, y con la ayuda de vecinos ayudando vecinos. Así, poco a poco comenzaron los problemas con Jane Yang, la dueña, la hija del dueño. En ocasiones, me devolvían las cartas con los cheques que yo enviaba de la renta, y se extraviaron dos, los cuales devolvieron un año después. Ellos no me decían "vete" o "múdate", pero me hacían la vida bien difícil dentro. Venían inspectores de la ciudad, del estado, hasta que en marzo de 2016, no les quedó otra que comenzar a arreglar el apartamento. Fue ahí cuando vino William Yang y estuvo empleado para arreglar los daños del baño primero. Yo les permití entrar. Al cabo de dos horas, estando yo en mi cocina, mi homatena malgarita, y yo, escuchamos ruidos muy fuertes y mucho polvo. La muchacha esperó que ellos bajaran, y fue a mirar lo que estaba pasando en el baño. Nosotros quedamos en un shock completamente. El baño estaba totalmente demolido. Techo, ventana, sacaron absolutamente todo, sin pedirme permiso, ni decirme lo que iban a hacer, y solamente entraron a arreglar tres cositas en el baño. Llamé a mi consejera Marcela. Ella pudo detener el trabajo. Varias veces tuve que llamar a la policía, porque el dueño gritaba y discutía, y trataba de entrar al apartamento, a la fuerza, y a intimidarme. El baño quedó, el baño quedó tan pequeño que se me hace muy difícil usarlo. Yo tengo muchas condiciones de salud, las cuales ellos ya saben también. Soy una persona que necesita la homatena, y llevo muchos años en ese mismo edificio, pero gracias a Dios y a vecinos ayudando vecinos, ahora tengo un abogado. El caso ya está en la corte, pero ahora resulta que ella ya ha tenido tres abogados diferentes. Cada rato cancela las vistas en la corte. En la corte dice que quiere tres días para terminar el trabajo. Cuando estamos allá, que yo cancelo mi cita, ninguno de ellos parece terminar el trabajo. Me tienen así, ya-
Perdón, your time is up. Could you translate, please? Could you wind up your presentation, please?
Good evening, my name is Ana Hernandez, and I'm with Neighbors Helping Neighbors. In 2013, I began to learn more about my tenant rights, because there were a lot of issues with my landlord, William Yang, and his daughter Jane Yang. The apartment was, my apartment was in terrible conditions, and every time I would call them and complain, they wouldn't do anything. They would just charge the rent. Due to all this, I began to report this to the city by writing to them, and with the help of Neighbors Helping Neighbors. the help of Neighbors Helping Neighbors. So little by little, the problems, the problems began with Jane Yang. On occasions, they would return my letters, and some of my checks were lost, my rent checks, and they returned them to me a year later. They wouldn't tell me to get out or to move, but they made my life very difficult. Inspectors would come from the city and the state, and in 2016, they had to, and they were forced to make the, fix things in my apartment. And that was when the landlord William Yang and his employee came to fix my restroom. I allowed them to come in, and after two hours, my home attendant Margarita and I heard a lot of noise and saw a lot of dust all around the apartment. And to our surprise and shock, the restroom had become completely demolished, and, and there was, even the ceiling was torn out. And to my surprise, and my home attendant's surprise, the restroom was demolished. I called my counselor, Marcella, and she was able to put a stop to the work that they were doing. Many times I had to call the police because the landlord would yell and argue and try to come into my room and to my apartment forcefully and intimidate me. And the restroom was left very small, and it was very difficult for me to go in. I have many health issues, and so that, that was very difficult. And my case is currently in the court, and the owner would just change up the appointments, and they've changed their lawyers like three times. And... quiere que lea esto último?
No sé.
Okay. Está decidiendo. Okay. Jane Yang toma el caso, oh, sorry. Jane Yang takes this case as if it were a game, and she would, she, she would make fun of me. And I come here to ask you to not raise our rents and give them an increase. They don't deserve it because they don't respond, they're not responsible.
Thank you.